Supplies gas.
So then you do a function.
Do you have cell phones in your offices now?
Not functional, no.
Okay.
Nope. They were eliminated. What year is the exact month? May, maybe. I was thinking of the.
So you did have cell phones and then you shut them off? It's month by month though?
Correct. That exactly.
Okay. And then I just want to go back up to also, so the home detention supervisor has a zero line, the second deputy probation officer. Where, where does it go to? Or you don't have?
The deputy probation officer will still. That's going to be in the joint court account.
So the second deputy is in the joint court now, is that right?
That's correct. The fifty-six zero six-three is now in joint court.
And then home detention supervisor, do we not have that anymore?
That would be in community corrections. And the reason we put that person into joint court was because the funds that are placed into supplemental adult probation can only be used for certain things. It's this, we've got to put the money in there anyway, so we put it over to the other accounts so we can fund it with other things if necessary and just takes it out of, because this fund will eventually be depleted. Because it won't be revenue.
Those two can be removed, the lines can be removed as they're going to the other parts?
Correct.
Or do they have to stay?
What happens is if there's nothing in those lines when you, they get their budget, there won't be a line. But it's always been on my computer.
Okay, so it's always going to show up on our?
No, it'll be not visible. It sounds like, she's saying it'll be on her system, but when it prints off, it won't print off as a zero line item or it will?
Right, and the reason here is because they spent something in years past, so it's just showing you that. But this year is zero. So it might take a year or two.
What I'm hearing is dormant line items will show in her system but not print out.
Okay, yeah, just double checking.
Can you hear me, judges?
Yes.
I know that the caseload has been up and down and it's really hard to kind of forecast some of the ancillary expenses in a law enforcement, arresting people, not arresting people coming through the system, but in supplemental adult probation, line drug testing. Twenty-twenty utilization was ninety-five hundred dollars on a twenty thousand dollar recreation. And then this year, only six thousand dollars to the first half of the year. And then requesting an increase there. What's the thought process there?
For the past year and a half, there, people have not been coming into the building as frequently because of COVID. And so I think some of those in-person drug expenses have been artificially low during the COVID times, although there were still drug tests being administered. I don't think it was at a normal frequency. I think is the explanation, Mr. Tachakun, do you think that's accurate?
I think it's that, and there are some service fee increases, I believe. But I don't think we'll go down. Hopefully that'll be an amount that we cover what we need. As far as caseload, I can tell you that this point in the year, it looks like we'll have the highest year we've had in at least a decade as far as number of criminal cases filed. The jail is full, as you're aware. Community Corrections has sixty people serving executed sentences. And she has about forty people on pre-trial release. So if that were to fail, there's another hundred people you can put in your jail. So now your new jail that you haven't built yet is full.
So the, to follow up with that.
It's going up.
Anecdotally, with the new prosecutor's office being a few years in the running now, there, you can start seeing some changes in the number of cases, types of cases, old cases that had investigations that have now been charged. And the state through the prosecuting attorney and chief deputy prosecuting attorney are pretty pretty consistent at every initial hearing requesting a term of release being that defendants are subjected to random drug and alcohol screens. And that was not something that the state had always requested in the past. And so if, you know, twenty percent were subjected to screens before and now it's a hundred percent, we're probably going to be doing a lot more screens. At least initially until the person passes the first couple and aren't a suspected to be violating the conditions. But I, I think the pool of people subjected to screens is growing based on a policy shift in the request made at work. Thank you, Mr. Cluver, for the question. Any other questions?
If not, we've taken our time in others.
We apologize. Anything for Mr. Shagley? He likes to not have to do it, but he normally has the most information next to the talking. Any questions for Mr. Shagley? It was, he used to be primarily adult probation and supplemental things and the bits and changes.
Of course, we're available for questions at any time, so.
Yeah, I'm working with you. We own a room all day with your schedule, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know how many of you know Dr. Backer?
Kim?
We need our new health officer.
Hello.
Couple of us.
As chairman of the Conmore Health, I'd like to introduce Dr. Emily Backer.
Hello.
Koko Bowe.
How are you?
She's in several specialty practices in Koko Bowe. And she also serves as the health officer of our company. And we're delighted and so happy to have her with us.
Thank you. Let's, let's jump into those topics now. Page thirty-nine.
Okay. Okay. Page thirty-nine.
You don't have page numbers.
Okay.
Eleven fifty-nine.
It's.
I'll just reference that for that.
Okay.
What's the thing?
You'll be on phone number eleven fifty-nine.
Oh.
How about the phone?
Yep, okay.
There you go.
You got here.
We have a.
And one says Milwaukee.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So first you have our salaries. We have asked for small raises for all of our staff who have obviously worked very, very hard this year. Over the last, I would say, and then mostly there's not a lot of changes. A few things, office supplies, medical supplies come up. You're asking for raises. Do you remember what it was? Two percent, Joyce?
I'm sorry.
I think it was a two percent raise.
Looks like ten percent on my.
That's the same. I think it's, is it more than two percent? Is it three? It's at the four and three. What's that?
Looks like ten.
Oh, it's ten percent, actually, so. So yes, and we have looked at difficulty of sometimes keeping staff or salaries. We have, I mean, public health is notoriously underfunded as a statewide funding source. However, we felt that based on what everyone's had to do in the past with COVID, that that was deserved. So we have applied for that, and then obviously that's up to the side. Other things, like I said, car insurance has gone up, repairs. One thing I do want to mention, I guess it's on your second page, the branding. That was actually, it was only put in the budget. The request is a hundred dollars. That was a typo. Part of the registers part. And we would ask that that be changed back to six hundred. I believe it was in the budget, correct? Is that right, Joyce? It was in the actual budget and was approved as six hundred, but when it was submitted, it was, there was a typo, the line should be a six. So. So, pardon me.
I'm going to look, because it added up to the sum.
Oh, it did, okay. But it should be six hundred dollars ideally, but we noticed on one of them when she typed it up, it was a hundred. But it was budgeted.
She turned it in as a hundred.
Okay. So I don't know if that can be changed or not at this point.
It's up to them.
It's up to them. So yeah, sorry, that was a mistake.
I, I told her it can be changed because it had already been advertised.
Okay.
So that's why.
Okay. So like I said, if you guys can change that, that mainly goes towards branding of like our staff, their shirts, basically. To get the shirts that say Carroll County Health Department, so that when they go onto some of the property, for instance, like that are septic or environmental people, when they walk in, they have that shirt that says where they're from, so people aren't like, you know, you're coming onto our property, you don't know who you are. So it's helpful to have that. I mean, obviously if we can't, I mean, we're the same.
Do they carry I D badges or credentials at all?
Yes, absolutely, they do. So like I said, if it can't be added, it will be added. But that was meant to be six hundred instead of a hundred. And then. And some of these things you can see last year, you know, we didn't spend all the money that was allotted to us. Some of that was because of COVID. Some of it was because we didn't have an environmental health specialist for a period of time. We had to leave the part-time. So a lot of things like environmental complaints that were simply just not addressed because we didn't have someone to do them. So some of those where you'll see where we didn't, you know, spend the money, we might end up spending it this year. So that's why we asked for the same amount as last year, because we assume that we may be using that again this year now that we have an environmental specialist, so.
The medical replacement and medical refrigerator replacement.
Mm-hmm.
The, we always question this, but it normally isn't a refrigerator, it's four thousand a year, isn't it? Until at least we replace, is there a reason why it's eight thousand this year?
Like, can't hear you frankly. I believe because it wasn't allotted last year, right? Because though the four thousand, you know how each year we ask for four thousand, this year we ask for eight thousand. And that's because, the way I understood it, that wasn't allotted to us. And we use that to build up, because we just know in a certain amount of time, we're going to have to replace the refrigerator. There are some eight thousand dollars fees. Without those, we can't store vaccines, which means we can't give vaccines, so.
What is?
The policy balance is not really correct on here.
We, we discussed this over here. And we, we said that we would not budget this money, but it is put back and it is recognized. But we do not budget it, because once it's budgeted, you're, you can spend it. Okay. So it is being put back. Okay. But it's just not in your budget. And it's. Where to be put back. It's in the fund to where we, and that is the list and stuff that I am working on of how we keep track of what's being put away but not budgeted, because we said if we budgeted the money, then they could spend that money or transfer it for something else. We've discussed this for two years.
That's the same thing as the car, the vehicle.
Yes, right, they're in the same issue.
But it's not the same issue, because if they, if they budgeted their whole cash balance, they're, it's not that. So I don't know what their cash balance is right at the moment. So that's something I'll have to get to.
Joyce, do you know the age of that refrigerator currently?
The oldest one, the oldest one down there. That's what I'm working on. You've got an old, old East End house.
Okay.
I got one, what, two years ago.
I was gonna, yeah, that's the one I thought you were talking about. So there's an older one than that.
There's one older than that. I, when I got the one, two years, three years. When I got that, the one that's still down there, we've got two of the same age. It's, it's lasting, it's the, after that was a hundred, children have been raised. They all have to be made. We've got one sitting in the basement that the compressor was going out, that's why we're missing. Cold enough for water, but it's not cold enough to meet standards. It's connected. And we can't even go buy the eight thousand dollar refrigerator temperature that owner built them. We have to buy a hundred and fifty dollar dada logger and put on there. They approve, they don't, they don't even want to approve the owner, but it runs right within the, they have one. So the oldest one down there, I know, is before.
Okay. Yeah, so we have to have more than one. Obviously, if one goes down, we could lose all of our vaccine. So we always have to have at least two. And so we've got one that's two years old. We expect that one to last, you know, for a while. And then, but we have the second one that we're looking at probably needing to replace. Because again, we have to have that backup, we have to have the one function.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we don't know where that other one's going to go. So it really is due for replacement. But as a council, that's why I'm working on this list, because we have got to figure out a way to, to figure out how many years, when they need replaced, what's, you know, ongoing. If we're not going to budget it, then we have to find a way to have the money there. Because we go through this conversation every time.
That's what I was trying to say to you. It's up to the department head not to budget that much money into their budget and have it still in their cash line. Because if they don't have it in their cash line, sending it to the state, they're not going to approve something that they've already budgeted, they're pulling out. So it.
So you're saying it's the department heads that need to do it?
Yeah, our department heads are the ones that need to, to know not to budget that. But they have budgeted it because they think they need it, so, because they haven't had it for the last two years at least.
So if we don't fund, if we don't put it in their budget, then what would happen? I mean, because we haven't put it in their budget.
I can't tell you that without seeing the cash line.
It would depend, yeah, how much money we have. Like I said, if all of a sudden.
Do you have a budget there? Just a regular budget?
We've given tax rate to, to the finalized budget requests plus the medical refrigerator. That's how we did it last year. So.
I thought we had the cell.
Of your budget status report.
Does it feel like my, like my, like the official's training?
Exactly.
Like, there's so much in there, but we only budget so much.
You understand that it is there.
It's like every budget.
There's like twenty-two thousand in there.
There's a little bit there.
Yeah.
Do you have a budget status report with you?
I think, I don't think she gave us. And as a department.
Well, you give them every month. You get it every month.
Do you want a budget status?
I'll, I'll look it up and I'll, I'll let him know.
Oh, wait. Well, then we have to think about them for her, this is twenty-two, twenty-twelve, twenty-fourteen. Started putting money in. I'm going to have the ones from July.
That's, that's great, that's one on one.
Okay, so you want.
Why don't I get one of these? This one?
Yeah. Okay. For instance, the end of July, Tracy, the end of July, they had a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in their cash balance. They are. That's the mom one.
Well, that's in this one. I think it's this one, yeah.
I like this, they can ask you. Well, this is perfectly fine. They have a hundred, three hundred and six thousand. But at one time, when they rented the car, they didn't have that. Okay? So they're perfectly fine with this budget and they'd be perfectly fine with an additional, but you don't know that until you look at your cash balance. There you go.
So I have another question. The. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The, looking at. So the health budget requested additional funds for office supplies. From twelve fifteen to eighteen hundred. Office supplies is also something that we do out of our health maintenance grants. And there was no budget request, no, no additional budget request from, from that side. It's my understanding that as long as you're not decreasing, you could ask for more out of the health maintenance budget, the grant budget, as long as you're not decreasing the general fund budget.
You can't change the.
You can't ask for more money on the grants. That's a pretty much set grant amount the state does, the local health maintenance and the trust account. And you can't use those till you empty the county budget, the eleven fifty-nine, that line item has to be emptied before you can use, and then it's an order. There's a, the local health maintenance is next and then the trust account. And.
And I believe you have to get those.
If we take a chance of using out of that grant money instead of the eleven fifty-nine, if the county does, if county cuts our budget, the state's going to cut the grant. And if we use the grants ahead of time, we can lose them. And we've had them every year since I've been here, but it takes a close eye on them.
I, I agree that they keep a close eye on them. Our utilization was only roughly sixty-six percent last year of that grant. So. Well, my question is, are we looking at the grants, saying, where we know we can use it and budgeting those dollars there? Because we're just giving back fourteen thousand dollars. Where are we keeping that in the line? I think we do keep that in the line, don't we? Or are we giving back to the state?
You mean what we don't use out of the eleven fifty-nine?
Out of the eleven sixty-eight.
That money goes into, is the carryover? And it can't be spent by anyone unless you ask the state. And I, we have to request it. And they can tell us to know, or they can tell us yes. But that, that's considered carryover while we don't spend it. And this year, the budget, everything in a mess because of COVID. We haven't been able to buy things like we should have. Still, I'm trying to do my job and Valerie's job.
So they have.
I understand what you're saying here, because you're saying you can't ask for more, but you did ask for more.
From eleven fifty-nine.
Your budget last year was thirty-four seven fifty-five, and your budget request to the state this year is thirty-seven two sixty-five.
Now, what she is saying is she can't move it from fund to fund without them, or, or line the line without their approval before they come to you. For instance, like.
Right. And what I'm saying is, you're asking for more money out of county general. And. That costs.
I got it.
You're correct, Josh. So you. So eleven fifty-nine has to be used first?
Yes.
Before the other two can be tapped into?
Yes.
Is what it comes down to?
Yes.
The state expects us to spend that money first before we can go to those other grants. In carryover, you have to request from the state whether you can carry it over and keep it or, or send it back. Nine times out of ten, did I make you send it back or do you keep it?
If it ever goes back, it goes into carryover, probably don't spend. This year, we even different, like I said, we haven't been able to spend all eleven fifty-nine. Like, the balances are not right on the budget that we have right now, because there's a lot of claims turned in, not often, but.
Okay.
They just, they go to July thirty-first. Everything that you have turned in by July thirty-first has been included in this.
I looked at some balance before it came up here, and Kathy said there's another one that's been out since then, she, she gave us, but I'm.
No, not since July, but these have been printed a long time ago, so. But the raises, the raises are what's increasing a lot of this.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure that the other lines, the social security and retirement, of course, but my group health. Office supplies, they did go up. Five hundred and fifty. Environmental health went up five hundred. Fuel went up. Five hundred. Telephone went up three, uh, one thousand. So there are some others that they did up. I can see what Josh is saying. But some of those lines I'm not in the eleven sixty-eight.
A lot of like, we didn't use because conference fees, and normally we're all having to go to conferences, but the children here, they all got canceled and you had to watch webinars all the time.
Well, what I mean is, like, your fuel went up, but there's not a fuel line in eleven sixty-eight, so that's what you have to compare.
Was the part-time nurse utilized? We don't have one. Except for, well, we use COVID dollars to pay her. Yeah. Because what we've used the part-time nurse for is for helping with shots. But that was COVID.
If it was not COVID, was the part-time nurse utilized?
That's.
No.
No. Thank you.
Grant's not going to last forever. I hope.
I hope it doesn't. Right, that's why, obviously, we've put that in, because.
The grant won't last forever?
That's where they're, they decided to pay it out of the COVID, so they didn't have to pay it out of here. Because that's something that they can use that grant money for.
So that's why we did not use that this year, because we had the COVID dollars. Because we were using them.
Probably that's what she was working on.
Yes.
So it should have been.
Yes, and it was appropriate that she's helping idiot COVID vaccine, so we can use that money, because obviously, you know, that money comes with a lot of restrictions. So, but in the future, we would like to have a part-time nurse, if possible, and if the COVID dollars are gone, then that would have to come out of budget. So that's why that line is still there, even though we didn't use that money last year. The health educator is also the same one. We didn't use that last year because the schools couldn't allow extra people into the schools. So we would like to do that at some point again, so that's why we didn't use that, but we have it there. And again, if that's not COVID related, we can't particularly use COVID money for that, so.
Because eventually I see the COVID money.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. So we certainly can't depend on, we'll use what we can, obviously, and what's appropriate. But yes, no, this budget is without the thought that we'll have.
That's another thing we need to ask about, is the health educator was admitted, somehow it's not in the salary ordinance, but it was approved in the budget for this year.
Right, but that was, it's not in salary ordinance, how we change that, yeah. That's something we have to bring up at the council meeting.
Okay.
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 Hey, you back?
Yeah.
All right.
Other questions specifically? Do you want to go through all of the grants? I think so.
Sorry, I got cut off there. So my, my broader point was that a larger amount of dollars was requested from the state this year. And it went into the salary line, which may or may not be approved. But if, what I'm hearing is accurate, it can't be amended, so that money is, is going, it just doesn't get spent again. And I'm not trying to belabor this point, but this, the budget utilization is historically not one hundred percent, so we're just wasting their, those dollars aren't getting used. And so that puts more pressure on county general, or the health department, which in turn puts more pressure on county general. So. I would just ask that whoever establishes the budget for next year, if we don't, if that's true, we cannot adjust it between now, budget, the end of the budget cycle, that they may coordinate with the council pre, excuse me. Prior to the, the, it being big, excuse me, the budget being submitted to the state, or the grant being submitted to the state. So that's, that's my idea.
I'm not understanding what he's talking about.
What, what's your comment, Beth?
I said, no, the health department's expenses go through county general.
I, I, what I'm saying, I want to be really clear on this. If, if we had to give additional rate to the health department because of their budget request, it could have been lower.
I understand.
It puts pressure on county general, but does that rate cannot be applied to county general.
Okay. Are the pod, or what they, what there's increases for ours, for the general increases?
So if ours increase, then everyone in the county needs to increase, so I understand now. Yeah, I think I do too, so.
It will decrease. If yours increases, somebody else's will.
Decrease, even though ours comes directly out of that fund.
It doesn't, that doesn't matter. It's called the levy.
Okay, yeah, and our levy doesn't change unless, yeah, so, understood.
No.
Yeah. So, and, and like I said, I think what you're getting at, I mean, why are we asking, you know, for such, what seem like huge rate raises, probably to merit the rest of the county? It's simply because I think, and, and obviously this is a, a small county, but, you know, you're really running on bare bones here. You know, you compare, I mean, as far as having, you know, one public health nurse, you know, part-time, you know, part-time sort of now. You know, you want to have a preparedness coordinator, we're trying to hire one. If, you know, I think looking forward. Um, if, you know, I think looking towards the future, you know, if you want to have a health department, you really have to invest in it because it's very difficult to hire people and keep people, um, at salaries that are offered. And I understand though, it's taxpayer money, so you have to be very, very careful with it, you know? But at the same time, you have to look at what you're doing and what your task is doing and do you have the staff to do it and can you keep the staff? Because having valuable trained staff is obviously very, very important in the health department, as any department. But, so, um, but that's, like I said, where that's coming from. I mean, those people have obviously worked really, really hard this year and we'd like to keep all of them. And when we're training new people, we would like to beat them also. So. Any other questions for me?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Phil?
Dr. Becker?
Yes.
Morning.
Morning.
Of course, we, we, we commissioners for the benefit of death went through all of last year's stuff and just pretty well tried to figure out what we could, what it was going to cost to do the business we had, we had to do. So if you look at the commissioner's budget there on line one and three, we, we just asked for a ten percent. Now, I'm not sure that number two is right on, on the sheet here because, um, last year was twenty-six nine fifty for the county attorney and this year, sprint of year is twenty-three oh one nine. So I, I think that actually should be twenty-nine six forty-five is our request.
Twenty-six nine forty-five.
Yeah, twenty-nine six forty-five.
Twenty-nine six four five.
Because that's proven somehow it got drawn to four, um, it'd be less than last year's.
Just, just, just to clarify, that's ten percent raise for the year?
Yeah. Going down through social security, we're estimating it's going to be up by twenty thousand dollars next year. And retirement up by twenty thousand. That's just reflected in the increases in costs of number of people. Uh, group insurance should stay the same. And I'm real happy with that because a few years ago, group insurance was one that every year about snapped our heads back there with how much it was going up. And we've been able to manage that one very well for the past four or five years. Been excellent. Unemployment's going to, we hope to stay the same. Our HSA contribution, um, is up. What we're going to have to put into that.
They look like they give a hundred, um, one thousand five hundred per year for each employee. And of course you have to bank on a hundred employees, so. They just feel like that's a benefit to the employees.
Can you say that again?
They give a thousand dollars now, five hundred in April and five hundred in October. They'd like to do seven fifty and seven fifty.
Do you boys have to do anything to accrue?
Um, right now they're in the process. They have to file two, a wellness, um, you know, doctor checkup or whatever, um, COVID shots, flu shots, dentist, going to the regular doctor, physical. But they have to get by September thirtieth. And if they do qualify for those, then they get their money in October, but they have all year to do it. Also in April was they have to have blood work done.
They have to have a COVID shot to get fifteen hundred?
No.
No.
That's not what I said. I said that's one of the things that they could do.
Oh, so they can pick and choose to do.
It's a preventative measure. In April, like I said, was the blood stick or the finger sticks. To do their blood work.
Going down, maximums is the same, legal services same. CDC, uh, we're hoping is the same. Valley Oaks, uh, is the same. Cost of keeping juveniles, we're leaving the same. Building appraisals is the same. Curpsy, uh, I think we need to adjust this number out here too because, uh, actual spend in twenty, twenty was eight oh six two. When we ended the budget this year was eighty-five hundred. I think we should be back to eighty-five hundred again this year. So it's the same really.
That's the actual bill?
Yeah.
I mean, eighty-eight, eight oh six two, if you remember, we got a letter on that. So that's what it should stay as, eight oh six two.
Should stay at the eight oh six two? Okay. All right, that's fine. And that is a learning experience for me because in all these years I've never served on the curtsy board until this year. That's green lighting and all those things. I have no idea what all things they do for different counties. I'm beginning to learn. Internet, looks like we're going to have to go up. On the IT, this because of cost. Telephone. We're wanting to keep the same. Meeting in violence, the same. Personnel policy, consulting, we're hoping to stay the same. Information technology, the same. Printing and legal notice is the same. On the next page, uh, our bonds, we think will stay the same. Uh, building structural liability, the same. Workless comp, the same. Accident and sickness, same. MPO, um, they're not raising your city. That's our metropolitan planning organization. We're part of, we're all together. They do the, oh, when you see, uh, encounters out, come, uh, traffic on the roads and all that stuff for us, planning changes in our, our, we don't have a lot of changes planned, maybe in our county, but it does help a lot to, uh, to know the counts on the different roads so we can set priorities with the highway department, who gets the first line of. Which by the way, we're all done now with the big A for this year. GIS maintenance is the same. Pool car. We put a thousand back in for that this year for maintenance on it. Apparently it is being used some in pool car, which of course is a retired police car.
It had not been used, so that's why we didn't put anything in before.
So lawn care maintenance, we have two different lawn services that work for us. That's up a little bit.
What do they do? I mean, I assume fertilizer, what else?
Mowing and, uh, they don't do the, uh, like when I was speaking, we got, they're not supposed to be our custodial staff. We need to work on that, so.
Well, I've seen them on Ryder. Does he mow too or?
I don't, I don't think so. I.
They just mow. They do not do the fertilizing. They do not, um, but at the beginning of the year, they might pick up sticks. One company charges one, the other one doesn't, um.
So both companies just mow?
Yeah.
No, all the county. One has Deer Creek Park, don't worry. One has the three endless garage, garages, courthouse, the jail, the care center, the transfer station.
So you bid this out and they're both going to go up at least twenty-five hundred dollars this year?
We're anxious to create.
And they do this little EMS down there that films like with the courthouse.
Labor calls to hired employees with COVID.
There is.
And they have them in there for two years at one time. So this is, this is the year that they can increase.
Lost my place here. Special services, the same. Equipment contracts, same. Membership dues, the same. Senior citizens bus, we're taking that out of edit now, so we zeroed out. Let me see that. We're anticipating taking that out.
No, it already is. It was last year.
Okay.
No, yes, we should say anticipate.
Examination of records is the same. Gas is up a little bit. Courthouse drop box, zero. Group management, uh, up fifteen hundred. Just a little bit up. We've got some zeros coming up here on radio tower repair, paved it out. Paved it out, advances. The last two there are zeros again. Take them off the books. Final page here. I need some advice from you folks on this. ADA compliance.
Page thirty-eight.
Pardon?
I was asking, telling them that's on page thirty-eight. This is.
Q and A.
Just waiting on Doc to find his picture. Josh, you feeling better? Maybe Josh can't hear me. You feeling better, Josh?
I'm good. Yeah, I'm good there every day. We'll start on that.
Hope so, Josh. Hope so. Okay, uh.
Thank you.
We are on ADA compliance. That's where we have a, every year we're supposed to do so much of, of upgrades of our county things to make sure that they're in compliance with, uh, the new ADA laws or they're not that new, they're going through the ADA laws. And actually, we're keeping this the same. Uh, we haven't spent any money on this for a while. Our highway engineer was the one who was in charge of this and doing it every, every, we had quite a, uh, robust program started out on making sure we got everything up to date. In the last two or three years, we just, it just kind of fallen through, but haven't, hasn't been done. We can anticipate, I think, that we're going to be asked to, to, uh, wherever we are on that, and we'd like to see it in the budget. That's of course your decision. Courthouse renovation. This is the one I needed by some. It has been a, uh, not contentious, but a, a, a discussion of where to put, uh, the area for investigation of Abby Littler. Currently, the investigation room is out in City Building. And City Building has asked us to, uh, leave their, redoing that area there and they'd like us out. And they've kind of set as, uh, September thirtieth is the date going to be out. We've kicked this around and kicked this around and haven't always been in agreement as far as the commissioners about what to do with this. We have looked at various buildings around town here. I mean, I've gone out, banged on doors, looked everywhere, looked at realtors and, and tried to find the, an adequate space for them. I figured what'd they say? There's nine filing cabinets or something like that full or, and then they have all sorts of other things or table things. It has to be very secure. And it has to be a direct line of custody of who has this so that there's no, uh, appeal possible of any verdict or anything because of tampering of evidence or something. So everybody is very, uh, is involved in the case and very concerned that we find some spot that is very secure. The first thing that came up was the, uh, training room downstairs. They said, let's put it all down there. And that room is adequate sized for it. The problem is that that's also the storage room. I'm sure you called it down there, but the, the, the east wall of it is all covered for the health department. That's where they're talking about refrigerators. That's where they had an extra refrigerator down there. And, uh, health department's constantly using that. And that's, they, it's almost daily of drawing things out of there. That's their supply area. And, uh, the, uh, emergency management has, on the south end of that room, the emergency management has a, a truckload, I mean, a big truckload. I, I have said semi, but I don't think it's quite that big. But anyway, a lot of stuff down there. It's emergency management equipment that's stored down there. All of which has to come out because they can't have, allow anybody in and out. So that, and we'd have to put on a new secure steel door. And it just, the more it was kicked around, the more we decided this isn't going to work because we don't know where to put the health department stuff that they need to get to, we need to use every day. And we don't know where to put all the emergency management stuff. So we decided that is not going to work. The part of it that says it has to be dedicated only to this, can't be used for anything else, is what is the kicker to us on this. We've looked at buildings outside of the courthouse. And for one reason or another, the, the deputies or the, or the, uh, commissioners themselves have rejected various buildings. I have never been told exactly the number of square feet needed. But it came to us from the detectives that they would like to use half of the museum.